I'm calling this meeting to order. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Here.
Depeña?
Here.
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 Pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which is one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice.
Just gonna ask you all, please remain standing so we can do a moment of silence for Councilwoman Marie Burke.
You gotta, you gotta sit on that one. It's an SM 58.
Okay, so the next order of business is that we have a proclamation to be presented. That resolution is gonna be handled later on in the meeting, but right now, just because I know we have some special guests that are here in the audience, Deputy Mayor Cosarelli's gonna formally present the proclamation now.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So, we have the honor of presenting a proclamation to the owners of Modern Millwork tonight. So, I know I see Vinnie Colonino in the back, so maybe, Vinnie, you wanna come up over here to the, to microphone real quick? I won't put you on the spot, that's right, you don't have that talk.
Yes, you will.
So, uh, well, the proclamation is pretty self-explanatory, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna read it to the crowd right now.
Yep.
Whereas, since its inception in 1948, Modern Millwork Kitchen and Bath Studio has been a cornerstone of excellence in the field of kitchen and bath design and remodeling. Under the visionary leadership of owner Andrew Colonino, who acquired the business 50 years ago, and his son Vincent Colonino, who was a vital part of the management team, Modern Millwork Kitchen and Bath Studio has flourished into a beacon of creativity, innovation, and quality craftsmanship. Andrew Colonino, a certified kitchen designer for an impressive 55 years, has demonstrated unparalleled expertise and dedication to his craft. Andrew and Vincent successfully have completed over 3,000 remodeling projects. The dedicated team at Modern Millwork and Bath Studio continually updates their skills and knowledge to stay abreast of the latest trends and products in the market, ensuring that they deliver innovative and cutting-edge solutions to their clientele. Whereas, the establishment of a beautiful showroom by Modern Millwork Kitchen and Bath Studio showcasing a diverse range of craftsmanship and products from their classic ornate detailed cabinets to modern simplistic designs serves as a testament to their commitment to excellence and customer satisfaction. Now therefore being resolved that the mayor and municipal council of the township of Belleville commend Andrew and Vincent Colonino along with their dedicated team for their unwavering commitment to excellence, innovation, and customer satisfaction.
Thank you.
So, in short, they've been in business for, what, 50? Go ahead, Vinnie.
Seventy, seventy-six years.
Seventy-six years, right, right.
Yes, I'd like to thank the council for the recognition. We have been a strong family, we have strong family ties to Belleville, and I personally get to do two things every day. I get to enjoy what I do, and I get to come home to my roots every day. I'm, you know, class of 88, Belleville, and we, we enjoy being here, and I don't know if we could be another 75 years, but maybe, maybe another 25 to 50 would be good.
One more generation.
One more generation would be good.
I have heard that they do excellent.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much, yes. Oh, okay.
Shut this one off, this one.
Yes.
When you're done shutting, how about the report of the manager? Next on the agenda is the report of the manager.
Good evening, Gary.
Good evening, Gary. Last week, in a, on Bill Street Friday, I will not be able to attend, but the best assistance town in the state of Jersey, um, while I'm in Kansas City. I just want to just give you some footnotes of what to expect, because this project is scheduled to start on the 1st. It will just, there will have, there will be a bunch of changes to some of the, you know, the capital, relatively, the, their, their, their product base of this project, you know, its base property, which is from Cleveland to, 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 and that will involve building, payment, right on Washington Avenue. Always try to be too, everybody's open, there will be no parking, this is pretty important, during this, construction, there will be no parking on either side during work, but make impact on some of the businesses, we realize that, especially with the, yeah, it's important. On Washington Avenue, there will be no crossing on Washington Avenue during work, right there, only will be, it will, the project will be responsible for the, uh, parking lot. Uh, let's see, that's, uh, it's, it's working, which should last about three to five days, but, that's the update for that. I also want to bring to everyone's attention, tonight's introduction, although there is a lot of work, uh, ahead of us, when I say ahead of us, probably, adopt, arguably, probably until, but we are introducing the budget tonight, again, for the fourth year in a row, of the average home, will see less than a $100 increase, actually, take less point out, it's about, or the fact, the number's about 62, 63, now, we've got 62, 63 on the average home, and again, this is the fourth year in a row, we've had years as low as 38, 47, 69, in 1987. Yeah. Um, specifically, some of the more details for the adoption of the budget, but, but keep in mind, keep in mind that this budget is a very sound budget. We did face a $2 million increase in health insurance, and we continue to work on that. We have, we have a plan, we have a plan and a project in place to hopefully address the insurance going forward. We're working on that, but we speak, we'll be able to bring, raise the news to the council. But, again, we're facing a $2 million increase in health insurance, that's something that obviously jumps up the page. We're very fortunate, we are, bringing in revenues, our revenues are high, and, you know, payroll's offset some of these, and still maintain an average increase of $100 for the fourth year. Certainly, the question is, look forward to the, uh, public areas, again, budget change, unless there's some drastic changes in a decrease or an increase today, so, again, you never know. Hope to have this budget, about, from the state, ready to adopt, hopefully, eventually.
Any questions for the manager?
Can I just, through the chair?
Sure.
Not on the budget, by the way. So, I, I know, and I know, the mayor's been, talked, you know, talked a little bit about this, in the corner of Belleville and Garden, the, the young lady wants to put a, a light or, you know, explore something with the county, with the county, as to putting up a light there, since there's gonna be so much more added traffic going across to those fields, the new fields that we're renovating there, right on Belleville Avenue. So, I just wondered, you know, if we could get in touch with the county ourselves as well, from the council?
I'll, I'll throw the number.
Please, let me know.
Mayor, I have a question on budget. So, Anthony, a couple of questions.
Give me back.
That's okay. On the, on the, our first meeting, on the 20th of January, in our committee, we went over the budget. We had concerns at that point. November, February 9th, I actually called the meeting after looking into it, voiced my concerns. From then, we, people on the committee, had questions, and we were supposed to have another following meeting. Dark, until 3:07, I know the mayor and others, myself, have been writing emails from 3:07 to 3:20 on the budget, meeting, wanna go over it. Then we get a meeting, we get a email with the budget on Friday at 1:53. How, unless everybody up here knows something I don't know, what's in the budget, how can we actually want to move forward on the budget when we don't know? We know the number that we talked about, we know the number now, how did we get there? As a councilman, I wanna know how we got there, with detail.
A lot of hard work by the finance department. I'll throw Frank, jump in at any time, but this process actually started in October.
Right.
Um, there were at least five different versions of the budget, uh, yeah, with the other ones, having the ringing, versus, uh, expecting this, again, the biggest thing that I always had to address, now, audio, full, full, is insurance, security of introducing the budget.
Early.
You know, for the last five days, we had pointed out there, anybody would certainly ask a question, but, that would have been the easy part.
Three.
But over the next, over the next, probably, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine days.
Yeah, sure. Easy, at least.
At least sixty days, that is definitely, uh, given rate from, from, certainly, it's correspond, so, we see, certainly share with the council, and certainly, you know, any, any, the, 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 it's, probably, the, 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 the,[968.12]
What she can deliver to us from federal funds. I did get an email today, or this week, I should say, from our CFO and the Township Manager. We did receive a half million dollar check from the Silver Lake apartment complex. I think that might represent the first or second pilot, second pilot payment ever. And ninety-five percent of that money goes to us, unlike divvying it up a third to the county and a third to the school district. So that is a half million dollar check. So when you hear the word pilots, it is not a negative. It is a revenue share. It is not an abatement. We are in business and in partnership with these complexes. That is a half million dollars, two hundred-plus units, and only four kids in the school district. You will be hearing a lot about this. Manager mentioned it. You'll be hearing some stuff from the Police Department coming up. The state DOT is about to start a roughly thirteen million dollar road improvement project on Washington Avenue. I'm not quite sure Bevel is ready for this project. I'm not quite sure we all collectively understand what that's going to mean for our lives over the next twelve months.
Happening anyway.
But it's happening in five phases. The first phase is about to happen. This is a state DOT project. This is not a township project. This has nothing to do with a development or not a development on Washington Avenue. This is something that I found in a box six years ago when I went into the mayor's office and we dusted off the dust on that project and re-engaged the state on that. So we are talking about a thirteen million dollar project from the state DOT. It's going to be starting within the next week or so. So I'm sure we're all going to be ready for that. The Police Department's already been all over it, designing traffic alerts and construction alerts and new traffic patterns. It's going to be something.
Do we have a, not to interrupt you, but do we have a phone number where if businesses or residents have complaints on that or questions that they could get answered directly from them?
Maybe DOT. Maybe we can put that.
Hotline or something?
Call the DOT.
Yeah.
They're putting that in the town website and the.
Okay.
Both side flyers.
The alternate line will be the chief's cell phone.
Yes.
If you have any questions, complaints.
The hardest, the hardest stage is the first stage.
Yeah.
If we get through that.
It's all downhill.
Well, as you could say. The first stage is the worst stage anyone, emergency roads, Police Department.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Hardest, hardest stage.
Stay tuned to website, stay tuned to Nixol, stay tuned to social media because we're going to be telling everybody about that. Once again, it's a state project, not Bevel's project.
Probably taxing on us.
Yeah. If you've seen my social media, I do urge you to follow our community garden or our farmer's market social media page because that farmer's market is now coming. It'll be here before you know it, actually. It's going to be twelve or fourteen weeks long, and we're really looking forward to the new location. April first, alternate side of street parking begins again, which also means street cleaning commences. That's going to be good. If you were here or you are aware of the town hall style meeting I hosted with PSCNG and residents from Carmar Avenue and that neighborhood, those documents that we promised are now on the website. I sent a letter to all the residents that are affected, and we're just waiting on one more answer, Mr. Manager, from PSCNG about the screening. As soon as we get that answer, we'll post that on the website. Junior Police Academy, applications are out. Always a fantastic, always a fantastic event. Look forward to going to that graduation every year. And I know we kind of did it at the beginning of the council meeting where we paused for a moment of silence for Councilwoman Burke, but it's never easy for a council to lose a member. I don't think it's probably happened in fifteen or sixteen years since maybe PJ was here. Listen, we're a family. We don't always disagree. We don't always agree. We do disagree at times as a seven-member board, personalities, opinions matter, but it's just never easy to know that that seat's going to be not filled and it's going to be empty until the population of the township residents have an election to fill it. Councilwoman Burke had been noticeably absent in some meetings. I believe the last council meeting that we had before we had to cancel it, we actually did acknowledge her because we thought she might be watching us from the live stream. So it's never easy, and the township did receive an outpouring of support when it came to that loss. And I know the Police Department Manager's Office, everybody went to work to make sure that her family was taken care of during that funeral and the procession, everything else. So I just want to thank you, Chief. Thank you, Mr. Manager. And we have to go forward, everybody. That really does conclude my mayor's report. I do want to move on now to the approval of minutes.
Motion?
Second. Motion for February fourteenth, two thousand and four. We have a motion. We have a second. Clerk call or roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Braziano?
Yes.
Notary?
Take no part.
Rabel?
Yes.
And Mayor Melham?
Yes.
The minutes are approved.
Communications.
St. Anthony's Church is having their annual festival on May thirty-first from five to ten p.m. On June first, on June first, from three to ten p.m. Now, let's go back. On May thirty-first, from five to ten p.m. And on June first, from three to ten p.m. With a rain date on June second. Signature Fitness is having their annual porters event on Saturday, April twenty-seventh, from eight-thirty a.m. to four p.m. With a rain date of Saturday, May fourth. In your package, you have your local finance notice, twenty-twenty-four dash oh-seven financial disclosure statement. The deadline for the filing is Tuesday, April thirtieth. There's guidance there if you filled them out last year. You have your PIN number, you have an ID, and you have a password. In the event that you forgot, reach out to the clerk, and he'll be more than happy to provide you with your information. The clerk's office received a letter from Joseph Alexander's office with respect to the master plan consistency for the ordinance oh-eight twenty-four to adopt the two-seventy-two, two-seventy-eight Washington Avenue redevelopment plan. We also have with us redevelopment council, Dean Donatelli, who can also discuss further the process of the review from the board. Again, the clerk's office received a letter from Joseph Alexander's office with respect to ordinance oh-nine, which is up for adoption on two fifteen Bevel Avenue, redevelopment plan there. Redevelopment council, Dean Donatelli, is here, and he'll explain that.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Next on the agenda is ordinances. Ordinance oh-one dash twenty-four, ordinance for reintroduction. An ordinance amending ordinance thirty-three dash twenty-three, Chapter Four, Article Twenty-three, massage therapist, massage technician, masseur of the revised ordinance of the Township of Bevel with a new Chapter Four, Article Twenty-three, entitled Massage, Bodywork, and Somatic Therapy. So this is a reintroduction?
So to fill in the council, unfortunately, the clerk is going to take the hit on this one. When we went through the whole process last time, inadvertently advertised the wrong ordinance. Normally, that that happened, we have to do the process over again.
So this is an introduction, not a second reading? We're back?
We're back to square one again. It's called reintroduction.
Got it.
Motion for reintroduction?
Second.
Motion made and second for reintroduction. Clerk call or roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Braziano?
Yes.
Notary?
Yes.
Rabel?
Yes.
And Mayor Melham?
Yes.
Ordinance oh-one twenty-four is reintroduced.
Ordinance oh-two dash twenty-four, ordinance for possible adoption. Bond ordinance providing for water main valve and lead service line replacement in and by the township of Bevel in the County of Essex, New Jersey, appropriating four-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand dollars therefore, and authorizing the issuance of four-hundred-thousand dollars in bonds or notes of the township to finance cost, to finance part of the costs thereof. Need a motion?
Open for public?
For public.
So moved.
Motion made and second to open for public commenting. Clerk call or roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Braziano?
Yes.
Notary?
Yes.
Rabel?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes.
So we're open for public commenting on this ordinance and this ordinance only. If you have a question about this particular ordinance, please raise your hand. When I call upon you, Mr. Frantantonio, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
My, it might whistle. My whistle.
Vincent Frantantonio, one-twenty-nine Mount Parspik. There's two ordinances on there for this valve replacement. I assume they're different areas of the town. Can we know what areas each of these ordinances for?
Mr. Manager, do you have that list? I know the lead service lines, we started in the dead center of town, which is right around Garden Avenue going outward. I'm not quite sure what particular.
Garden and Bolman.
This one?
I believe so. I'll confirm that tomorrow because I did speak, I was asked by the congressman's office to give them an update as well, so I reached out to him. And I know we're on Garden and Bolman, and I will confirm that.
All right. And I don't know if any of you read the papers. Who was overseeing these installations?
I believe it's our engineer, Mr. May, Mr. Harris.
Okay, I've got some questions over the years on that. The reason I ask, we've got to be careful because if you read the article about a week or two ago in Newark, they did an inspection and they found out that the contractors did not complete, replaced all copper. They left sections of lead pipes in there. A difficult part was under the curb and all there. So that was a big exhumation. You know, now they're going digging them all up again. Are we making sure these inspections that we're getting a good job?
Hope so.
Yep. Mr. Frantantonio, I can tell you this, that the work that has been completed to date, each address, the pictures are taken. We can even share some of those pictures with you where you actually see the copper.
And it'll be all the way from the valve to the house, to the meter in the house? Is that what we're doing?
Yes. Our engineers require a picture of every house.
All right. I hope so because these contractors are getting paid double and triple what the regular plumber would charge for them. So I hope we're getting a good job.
Thank you. Anybody else to this ordinance, this ordinance only?
Evening, Carmella Fleisch, Main Street. You're bonding four-hundred thousand, and is this on top of the million that the state already gave?
Yeah.
This is part of the community development.
No, no, I'm saying, but that million that she gave us is going to go for other lead lines. Our, we do a couple million dollars a year in lead line replacement. If we were to do the whole town, we'd be thirty-eight million. So it's going to take us a decade plus to get close.
And you're going to get reimbursed almost all of that from community development.
In this one.
Two ordinances that for lead line replacement are going to be reimbursed except for some of the professional services by community development.
We have to buy. We have to buy first.
All right, so of the nine-hundred thousand, give or take?
Yeah.
You're going to get seven to change back. All right, cool.
Anybody else to this ordinance, this ordinance only? Hearing none. I'll make, I'll entertain a motion to close public commenting and move for final adoption.
So moved.
Second. Motion made to close and move for final adoption. Clerk call or roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Braziano?
Yes.
Notary?
Yes.
Rabel?
Yes.
And Mayor Melham?
Yes.
Ordinance oh-two twenty-four is adopted.
Ordinance oh-three twenty-four, ordinance for possible adoption. A bond ordinance providing for the acquisition and ownership machinery and equipment in and by the township of Bevel in the County of Essex, New Jersey, appropriating five-hundred-thousand dollars therefore, and authorizing the issuance of four-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand dollars worth of bonds or notes of the township to finance the costs thereof. Need a motion to open public commenting?
So moved.
Second. Motion made and second to open public commenting. Clerk call or roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Braziano?
Yes.
Notary?
Yes.
Rabel?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes.
We are open for public commenting on this ordinance and this ordinance only. Hearing none, hearing none. I'll entertain a motion to close, move for final adoption.
So moved.
Second. Motion made and second to close, move for final adoption. Clerk call or roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Braziano?
Yes.
Notary?
Yes.
Rabel?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes.
Ordinance oh-two twenty-four is adopted.
Ordinance oh-four twenty-four, ordinance for possible adoption. A bond ordinance providing for the water main valve and lead service line replacement in and by the township of Bevel in the County of Essex, New Jersey, appropriating four-hundred-and-ninety-thousand dollars therefore, and authorizing the issuance of four-hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars worth of bonds or notes of the township to finance costs thereof. Need a motion to open public commenting?
So moved.
Second. Motion made and second to open public commenting. Clerk call or roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Braziano?
Yes.
Notary?
Yes.
Rabel?
Yes.
And Mayor Melham?
Yes.
Ordinance oh-four twenty-four is adopted.
Hearing none, seeing none. Entertaining motion to close public commenting and move for final adoption.
So moved.
Second. Clerk call or roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Braziano?
Yes.
Notary?
Yes.
Rabel?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes.
Ordinance oh-four twenty-four is adopted.
Ordinance oh-five twenty-four, ordinance for possible adoption. A bond ordinance providing for the improvements to municipal facilities in and by the township of Bevel in the County of Essex, New Jersey, appropriating five-hundred-thousand dollars therefore, and authorizing the issuance of four-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand dollars worth of bonds or notes of the township to finance costs, finance the costs therefore. Need a motion to open public commenting?
So moved.
Second. Motion made and second to open public commenting. Clerk call or roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Braziano?
Yes.
Notary?
Yes.
Rabel?
Yes.
And Mayor Melham?
Yes.
We are open for public commenting on this ordinance, this ordinance only. Hearing none, seeing none. I'll entertain a motion to close public commenting and move for final adoption.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion made and second to close public commenting and move for final adoption. Clerk call or roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Braziano?
Yes.
Notary?
Yes.
Rabel?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes.
Ordinance oh-five twenty-four is adopted.
Ordinance oh-six twenty-four, ordinance for possible adoption. A bond ordinance providing for various improvements to the sanitary sewer system in and by the township of Bevel in the County of Essex, New Jersey, appropriating two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand therefore, and authorizing the issuance of two-hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand dollars worth of bonds or notes of the township to finance part of the costs therefore. Need a motion to open public commenting?
So moved.
Second. We have a motion made and second to open public commenting. Clerk call or roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Braziano?
Yes.
Notary?
Yes.
Rabel?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes.
Open for public commenting on this ordinance and this ordinance only. Hearing none, seeing none. I'll entertain a motion to close, move for final adoption.
So moved.
Clerk call or roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Braziano?
Yes.
Notary?
Yes.
Rabel?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes.
Ordinance oh-six twenty-four is adopted.
Ordinance oh-seven twenty-four, an ordinance for possible adoption. A bond ordinance providing for various improvements to the water utility system in and by the township of Bevel in the County of Essex, New Jersey, appropriating five-hundred-thousand dollars therefore, and authorizing the issuance of five-hundred-thousand dollars worth of bonds or notes of the township to finance the costs therefore. We need a motion to open public commenting?
So moved.
Second. I have a motion made and second. Clerk call or roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Braziano?
Yes.
Notary?
Yes.
Rabel?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes.
Open for public commenting on this ordinance and this ordinance only. Mr. Frantantonio?
What are we actually doing to the water system with this ordinance? Improvements? Improving?
Hey, wait a minute.
Mr. Dean Murray?
Just so you know, it's two-hundred-and-fifty thousand per year. The other two-fifty in this ordinance is amending your twenty-three ordinance to avoid the down payment because you did come out to be selfridged again. So it's not five-hundred thousand in total for this year. It's two-fifty per year without a down payment, okay? And those are improvements to the system, to the lines with all the collapses, the breaks. We've got, I couldn't tell you how many linear feet we have in a three-point-four-square-mile municipality, but it's a lot. And two-fifty does not get you very far. However, I can tell you, Mary, that in finding the sweet spot, what we do, two-fifty is the minimum amount that we need to put into.
Into the budget.
Broken lines.
Ready. Got it.
To get us through the year. That's the number, minimum number you need.
So this is not a specific area? This is just?
This is in place for all the stuff that.
For twenty-twenty-four's?
To turn up in this count.
Twenty-twenty-four issues.
Correct.
All right. Is this for when we have a break, or is this proactive? We're going to start fixing something before they break?
Both.
Both?
As long as this is to the system. I have a problem.
All right. The only thing I would recommend, when we repair a water main break, this fifty isn't construction. When they turn the valve back on, they have to turn it on very, very slowly. We had the problem on Bevel Avenue. They turn it on fast, and it breaks a weaker point a hundred feet up the road there. It was like three or four times on Bevel Avenue, for two months there. So somebody tell them very gently, like we do in a house when we do water, like there. Thank you.
Anybody else to this ordinance, this ordinance only? Nope. I'll entertain a motion to close, move for final adoption.
So moved.
Motion made and second to close, move for final adoption. Clerk call or roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Braziano?
Yes.
Notary?
Yes.
Rabel?
Yes.
And Mayor Melham?
Yes.
Ordinance oh-seven twenty-four is adopted.
Before we go on to oh-eight and oh-nine, I know we did seven already. We do have phones open. I just want to make sure there's nobody, I didn't hear anybody on the line. I just want to confirm that we have nobody on the lines for any of those ordinances. We can reopen them up if we have to. Anybody on the line? Any member of the public on the line for either of the first seven ordinances?
Hearing none.
Okay. Ordinance oh-eight dash twenty-four, ordinance for possible adoption. An ordinance of the mayor and the township council, the township of Bevel, County of Essex, New Jersey, adopting two-seven-two dash two-seven-eight Washington Avenue redevelopment plan. When do you want to do a little?
Be very short.
Do you want to do a motion open for public?
Yeah, let's do a motion open for public. We'll let Dean go first.
Motion open for public.
Motion second made and second over for public. Clerk call or roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Take your part.
DePena?
Yes.
Braziano?
Yes.
Notary?
Yes.
Rabel?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes.
Before we get into public commenting, we do have Dean Donatelli here. He is the Township's redevelopment council. I believe we also have our planner here on hand as well. I'm going to have Dean just give a quick, high-level summary.
Captain, to be very, very brief, this is an ordinance to adopt a redevelopment plan which was introduced by councils referred to the planning board. As Mr. Cabrera mentioned, there was a correspondence from the planning board reviewing that redevelopment plan for consistency review with the master plan. The planning board did find that the redevelopment plan was, is inconsistent with the master plan. And let me just step back. The property we're talking about is the former funeral home along Washington Avenue. The mayor mentioned the address. The two comments slash recommendations that were mentioned by the planning board was that the council consider adoption and perhaps formation of an ordinance and council to address public art and the arts that is displayed, you know, for public viewing. And the second comment of the planning board on this plan was that the council consider, including in the plan, a provision that requires parking spaces to be included in the rent. We need to put on the record if the planning board is going, if this council is going to adopt the plan, without those recommendations, we'll need, we'll need four votes and reasons on the record unless we're going to adopt it with those recommendations. I do have an opinion as redevelopment council. I think probably the ordinance for art and the creation of an art committee is probably best left independent of this particular redevelopment plan. It's something that the council should consider independently, and it's probably a good idea, but not to kind of bury it in this redevelopment plan.
But Dean, I wasn't at this particular planning board meeting. Was, I mean, I saw renderings of this building. There's no art. There's no art on a wall.
Correct. There's no exterior art. There is.
Why is public art a recommendation of the planning board for this particular project?
There is a provision, Mayor, in the redevelopment plan which is, requires the developer, redeveloper to provide artwork with.
We have that in most plans though, don't we?
It varies.
Okay.
It varies, yes. We try to, we try to, you know, there's a lot. New York City obviously has a 1% for art program. And it's, as you can imagine, I don't want to go too off track, but it's really, again, a world unto itself because you like to bring in nonprofits that do art and they can consult with the town. You like to create a committee that maybe has a member. You know, you might want to create an ordinance which gives, you know, recommendation authority and recommend, you know, for that committee. So, but to answer your question, Mayor, this particular redevelopment plan includes a provision that public art, public art, but it's in the lobby, so accessible by the public theoretically, which would be approved by the planning.
If the door is locked.
Not if the door is locked, yeah.
Every development now has swipe access, so I.
True.
That one confused me.
Yeah, so that's the first one. The second one, I think, is probably better dealt with at the planning board level, and the second one being provision of a parking space within the rent. I think that's probably better dealt with at the planning board on a case-by-case basis. The planning board could ask for a review of the form of lease, for example, for various projects, and then see if there are provisions in there that satisfy Mr. Marinello in that regard, given that they're charged, they're tasked, the planning board is tasked with.
We require a parking spot that.
It shouldn't be.
And the reason it would be included in the rent.
Not necessarily.
Because then, then you, can I not, can I rent but not buy the apartment, but not buy the spot? But then we're not giving a spot per unit like we mandate.
It varies. To answer your question.
Can we change that in our, in our language, in our?
So.
It shouldn't vary. It should, we mandate a spot per bedroom or a spot per unit, then you can't opt out of that spot by not paying. It should be included in the rent.
Okay. I can say, that, I think, is the thinking.
Assistant.
It's one, very difficult to enforce, and, and that could be a policy that the council adopts going forward. It's not currently in this redevelopment plan, but my recommendation is that it be dealt with at the planning board level. Because I think the planning board has a better sense, you know, because there's so many different options, right, Mayor? There's, there's dedicated parking spaces, there's first-come-first-served parking spaces, there's parking spaces that are included in the rent. If you pay $2,000, you get a parking space with it. Or is it $2,000 and $100 more for the parking space, which is a disincentive for residents to pay for?
More of an incentive than parking on the street.
More of an incentive, exactly.
We don't want that.
So, that's all. And on this, so, so those are, those are the thoughts on the record. I don't know whether the board can go either way, but if they're going to, if the board's going to, if the council is going to proceed without those recommendations, I think you need four votes. With those recommendations, that's a simple majority of those in attendance. And Alex Doherty, as you mentioned, Mayor, the township's professional planner is here to answer any kind of planning and design-related questions.
And if we, if we go forward without taking those recommendations, it's your recommendation that we address those independently?
Independently. That's my recommendation, and I.
And that we work globally and it wouldn't be just tied to one project?
I think that's probably the best way to handle it, because we all know, you know, council knows and the public knows better than me that parking is always a sensitive subject, and we're trying to deal with it as best as we can while, while we grow.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Any questions for Dean? Okay. So, we're open for public commenting. I know we have the planner on hand to answer any questions that we or Dean can answer, so we'll call upon you if needed. Mr., yes. Mr. Hinn.
Gary Hinn, 307 Fairway. Is this project separate from what the state's doing on Washington Avenue that we're talking about earlier?
Yeah, totally separate.
This is a development project.
Has nothing to do with the state.
Just for the apartments?
Yeah.
They're both on up there and everything. Okay. Talking about the planning board being involved in this, I'd like to request that you start televising the planning board so that people could see what's going on in the planning board and what decisions you're making for the town of Belleville.
Okay.
If possible, yous can do that.
Sure. Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Fentantoni?
Yes, I didn't get to the planning board, but I watched the video of it, and it was disgusting. You know, they're talking about whether rent, these minor things and all, and about artwork and all. The problem is, it's another classic example of overdevelopment. We're jamming all them units up there right across from the middle school, you know, and it's crazy. We've got this outrageous traffic now. Not one of your project has been completed yet. Not one unit has been rented, and we already have these severe problems. When are any of you going to have the guts to stop this overdevelopment? We had one member very concerned about the parking, not enough parking and all, which this member does several times, but then he votes yes. You know, so it's all phony baloney that they put up here. We're destroying our beautiful village. This is absolutely insane, and especially right across from the middle school. And then they're talking about, oh, the funeral parlor, we're going to preserve the facade and all that. But if you live carefully, then at the end, oh, no, they didn't really mean they're going to preserve the facade. There's going to be a new facade similar to that one, you know? And you've got members. It's a disgrace. I had a friend over the house who never saw a planning board meeting in his life. He was laughing. He says, "These people are planners?" He's, "I never knew what a planning board is." Most of them just sit there, never ask a question, just sit there half asleep, and then look, uh, yes. And some of them, their volume of their voice isn't even loud enough to hear the yes. Yes. You know, with no input at all.
Tony.
Stop the overdevelopment, which is destroying this town.
Thank you. Anybody else for this ordinance? This ordinance only. Mr. Dros.
Mary O'Trose, 95 Bell Street. I wonder if Mr. Donatelli could give us a clarification. I'm just a little confused on what he said about parking and something about a hundred-dollar park, and you weren't too clear on that. Can you explain that to me? I'm just a little lost there.
Sure. I was planning to.
So, one of the comments, and I should clarify that these communications were made to the board, the council, through a correspondence from the, from the board. One of the recommendations of the planning board was to include in the rent.
Dean, I'm going to have you just come here, please.
Okay. Was, whether it's, whether it's possible to include in the, in the rent for each unit a parking space. So, in other words, if I pay $2,000 for a two-bedroom, it would come with a parking space as part of my lease. That was one of the suggestions. Alternatively, which is what many developers and redevelopers do, is they charge $2,000 for the rent, and then if you want a parking space, it's X amount, $50 a month. And if you want to use the amenities, that's another, that's kind of how the, the industry. Yeah, it's how, it's how, it's how it works these days. You have pet fees and parking fees and amenity fees, and, and so one of the very good suggestions, but whether it's enforceable and, and if this is the right place to do it, would be, well, if I get a two-bedroom apartment, shouldn't my parking, and I pay $2,000 a month for it, shouldn't a parking, shouldn't that include it? And as the mayor indicated, that would be a disincentive, let me sort of say this a clear, right way. So, it would be an incentive not to park on the street, because you'd have, you'd be paying for a spot, you'd be included in your rent, he'd take you off the street and bring you to the building, which is, which is the idea. It's just very difficult, I think.
I'd like to figure out a way that we could address that going forward globally for every project. It's, if we require parking per unit or per bedroom, you got to get that in the rent, because if I don't pay it, can I still rent there? You know, so we have to figure out a way eventually to address that, I think.
Okay.
Because, because if you recall, a while back, I brought that up at a meeting here saying, you know, can you put that into the developer's contract where he doesn't charge extra? Of course, that's the problem they have on Belmont Avenue. The people don't want to pay the $100 a month extra, so they're going out all over Hackel Street and Honesty. I brought that up, so I thought you, that was what you were alluding to, yeah.
Yes.
But I mentioned that a while back, and I, I think that's the way to go, because at least you know they're going to stay on the property, not, you know, go all over the neighborhoods.
I agree.
That's good.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Colonel Fleishman, 33. Obviously, how many units are we talking?
It's up to 74 units. It's a redevelopment plan.
Okay. Okay, up to another 74 units on Washington Avenue.
Correct.
So, when you're going, starting from the edge of Newark-Belville line, so you've got that monstrosity on, like closer Belleville, you know, down there.
What?
Washington Avenue. Okay, so you've got that. So, you're thinking about putting another 74 units on Washington Avenue in the middle of the two other developments that are coming on the other side of Washington Avenue. Boys, you're going to run out of space on Washington Avenue soon. I mean, another 74 units? I mean, that's, to me, insane. There's enough already on there. They're not being, are they fully rented? I mean, I'm not going to go into every detail of everything. Half of them are still being built. That monstrosity near ShopRite, that's ridiculous. This is crazy. Enough is enough. Washington Avenue is only so far. You can't go anymore. You know, it's, it's nuts if you let this up the road.
Ms. Fentantoni?
Phyllis Fentantoni, Mount Prospect Avenue. We got to stop all this overdevelopment. I heard you say that he was going to keep the facade, but then I heard that he's going to knock it down and build something like it. We're ruining all of our history in Belleville. I mean, I've been to other towns. They build, maybe they'll build a two-story, but they keep the original facade. They have some history there. Has anybody been to South Orange and see what they did with their town hall? A developer bought that. He made a restaurant out of it, but kept the town hall. It is absolutely beautiful from the outside. We got to do something. We got to stop this. You're going to have all of these trucks that are delivering. You've got Amazon, UPS, you've got tractor trailers, and as you can see, they already hit the bowl on Rucker Street so many times. We're looking for an accident to happen. Please reconsider all this overdevelopment. I moved to Belleville because it was a small town. I didn't want to live in a city. If I wanted to live in a city, I would have stayed in Newark or went to New York. So, please reconsider what you're doing.
Anybody else for public commenting on this ordinance? This ordinance only? Do we have any, anybody on the phone line for this ordinance? This ordinance only?
Say it again?
Anybody on the phone line for this ordinance? This ordinance only? Hearing none, seeing none. I'll attend a motion to close. Move for final adoption?
So moved.
We have a motion made in second to close move for final adoption. Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Casarelli?
Yes.
DePacchio?
Until we exercise uniformity with all the developers and not selective enforcement, I will not take no part in this vote.
Nocevri?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Mayor Malham?
Yes. Good, move on.
Yes. Orderance 0824.
Ordinance 0924. Ordinance for possible adoption. An ordinance to the mayor and township council, township of Belleville, County of Essex, New Jersey, adopting the 202 and 215 Belleville Avenue redevelopment plan. Need a motion to open for public commenting?
So moved.
Second. Motion made in second open for public commenting. Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Casarelli?
Yes.
Rosiano?
Yes.
Nocevri?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
And Mayor Malham?
Yes. We are now open for public commenting on this ordinance, and this ordinance only. Ms. Fleishman.
Get my workout tonight, guys. Carmella Fleishman, 33. What is this zone for? Is this for more units or strictly business? Or can we change, or do you guys have the power to adopt it at one point and then change it to another zone? What's the zone for?
It's a mixed use, right?
So, this is mixed use. This includes a public parking lot, which is for some local businesses in that area.
So, no residential?
No, mixed use. So, there's apartments and there's commercial.
How many apartments?
Off the top of my head, Dean?
There's 17 at the existing parking lot, 17 units.
Another 17 units.
Not on Washington Avenue.
On Belleville.
I understand that, but it doesn't matter where it is. You know, it's, enough is enough.
Okay.
We're three and a half miles wide, whatever we are, not counting the golf course.
Would you rather the strip clubs still be there?
I'd rather a business be there.
That's a strip club.
That's what it was.
You know what it is.
I'm asking you, I'm asking you, ask me questions, I ask you questions.
Fine, you want a straight answer? Fine, yes, I'll take a strip club over 17 more buildings.
But then walking distance to a church and a school and everything else.
But, again, regardless of what business is there, again, the planning board has the ability to judge what buildings and what businesses go there. So, if a strip club was already there, whatever, and they wanted to put another strip club in the town, fine. How did it get in this town to begin with? If now all of a sudden everyone's, oh, opposed to a strip club, how did it get in there years ago?
Wasn't there?
I understand, it wasn't this council, it wasn't the former, it doesn't matter. It was there. Okay? If you guys want, if the board, the planning board wants to put another strip club there, that's fine. I'd rather take a strip club over 17 more units in this town.
You were on the record with that.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Phyllis Fentantoni, Mount Prospect. I'm going to ask you again. Please stop building the high rises. Has anybody tried to get onto Belleville Avenue during the day? I can't get out my street. I have to go around to the stop sign, to stop the light and come out and come out through Union Avenue. And that, that's, you're just clocking up the town. You're making it impossible for people to get it ready. You can't, it would take me 15 minutes to get somewhere. It takes me 15 minutes to get to my house up to where the AMP used to be. This is sick. Please stop it and stop greasing the developer's hands this way. Stop.
Anybody else for public commenting? Yes.
Gary Hinn, 307 Fairway Avenue. This location here is no place to start putting an apartment building. The traffic is horrendous all day long there, all day long. Where are you going to have an ingress and egress for the cars that come in and out of this here location? With all the traffic that we have, it's a very bad spot for that kind of development. Please, you're going to get, vote these down.
Mr. Fentantoni?
Shame on you, Mr. Mayor. You fibbed to Ms. Fleishman. It's not just 17. You didn't tell her how many units are going across the street in the parking lot.
I didn't say 17. That was Mr. Donatelli, our redevelopment council.
All right. The, you know.
Dean, can you?
None?
How many are going in the parking lot?
Seventeen.
No residential units.
And how many were wet is?
So, let's, just to clarify, there's an existing parking lot on Belleville Avenue.
Right.
It's vacant now. There'll be 17, 17, up to 17 units. That's what the zoning provides for. There's been nothing approved or heard by the planning board. 17 units max.
On the parking lot?
Yes. On, on the, on the wet, on the wet site, there is roughly 2,500 square, very small retail building, neighborhood retail, and the.
Believe it's going to be a bakery, maybe?
That the bakery is one of the permitted uses. We don't, we don't know.
How many parking spots?
So, the, the redevelopment plan provides for a total of nine parking spaces, with seven of them being allowed for.
Up to 17 units on the empty parking lot?
Correct.
Okay, so where did I fib, Mr. Fentantoni?
What?
Where did I fib?
Seventeen in the parking lot across the street.
Correct.
On the north side. And how many were wet?
Zero.
That would be where the retail, where a retail building is proposed. It's roughly about 25. Very small.
Plus, plus Dean, there's nine public parking spaces for the businesses that are there that have no parking.
Yeah, there's.
And that would be a revenue share for us.
There's seven, there's nine total, seven.
They said seven.
Nine total, seven for use by.
Seven for the public was sold and all that, and all that. Is the building, I couldn't ask because I watched it on the video, is the building coming down?
Yes.
So, it's only going to be a surface parking lot?
Surface parking lot with a small 2,500-square-foot store in the back of it, which probably would be a bakery.
There will be a store there.
Yes, Mr. Hinn, that was.
Again, I don't know, I have personally seen three accidents from 7-Eleven. I don't know how many there, because I'm not there all the time, but just in passing, there's been three accidents coming out, and I and others objected to that driveway going out on Belleville Avenue. For many years, when I lived in Newark, I used to come to Jackie's Lemon Ice. No problem with the parking in and out on Union Avenue. That one there is horrendous. And all this, now these 17 units are going to be there, it's absolutely crazy. You can't get out, nobody can get out. Like my wife said, we can't get out of our street. We used to be able to go out and make a left or right. Now we have to go down Home Street, go through light, and hope that we can get through. So, this overdevelopment is crazy. You want to make a parking lot? Do you just in parking lot? Make it a municipal parking lot. That's fine, because all the houses across the street were built years ago. They don't even have driveways, those homes across the street. So, they'd be glad to make a municipal parking lot. I'm sure they would pay a monthly fee to park there. But once again, overdevelop, and this is the craziest place of all. Belleville Avenue, like I said earlier, you can't go. And it's, and I've said it before, it's not only Belleville, it's Bloomfield and Montclair over the old development. We suffer because the road to get to Bloomfield and Montclair is Belleville Avenue, the only one that comes over the bridge to feed Montclair and Bloomfield. Stop it already.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gragiano, for taking no part in the other one. I'm glad one of you woke up and you see what's happening to our beautiful village.
Anybody else for public comment? Mr. Dros.
Just want some clarification again. I'm going to call it wet. Wet is going to be a bakery, correct?
Knocked down, small 2,500-square-foot in the back of it would.
But what's going to be in front of it?
Public parking.
Okay, so you're going to have public parking and the.
The businesses that are there.
Okay, and they're going to have, the business is going to be behind it?
Yes.
Okay, so, all right, that's clear as that. And across the street on the empty lot now, that's going to be 17 units with how many parking spots? 17?
Whatever that's required. At least minimum one per. All one-bedrooms.
So, that's going, no, I'm just saying that's going to be 17 spots. What about visitors? Not, I know that's why I'm asking you, because we were just talking about the parking in the other ordinance.
I can give you, I can give the council a kind of rule of thumb. We, the, we tried it, we tried, we tried to.
Unless Alex knows specifically. Alex, our planner's here.
Yeah, we can get Alex up here. Good idea.
Yeah, because we were talking on the other ordinance about parking, so I just want to see if there's any extras parking on that 17 units. Because you really can't park on Belleville Avenue. That's one of the problems.
But this is also going to alleviate some of that parking that's already there for those existing businesses.
Yeah.
Because they're going to be in a public lot.
We have seventeen, so one for one. And then we have the open parking at the commercial location.
Okay, so one per.
And we have that open public parking. There are seven additional parking stalls that'd be accessible to the public.
Okay. All right, the last question is, since this is an area of redevelopment, are both properties qualified for a twenty-five year tax abatement?
I don't think any of that's been talked about yet. I mean, everything qualifies for a five in Belleville. After that, we'll see what the next step is.
That's it.
Anybody else in public commenting on this ordinance? This ordinance only. Anybody on the phone line for this ordinance and this ordinance only?
Yes.
Okay. Can I have your name and address for the record?
Lady Amparo from 57 Fairway Avenue.
Okay. And your comment on this particular ordinance, ma'am?
Um, so if you do put up apartments in Belleville Ave, are you guys going to do something with the traffic pattern? Because that is my way home from work every day, and it's already always so traffic. It takes me so long just to cross Union Ave from Washington Ave.
I'm not sure what the traffic report mentioned, but that would, that intersection there would be county. And I've noticed some backup at that intersection. We could always reach out to the county to maybe recalibrate those lights that are there. But I'm unaware of anything specifically happening at that location.
I mean, if you go there, especially during school dismissal, forget about it. And also, you know, with the new quick check, you guys are so quick to open that, no apartment slam, but no regard to the commuters. This, it's crazy. It takes me eleven minutes to get from my house across the bridge to get to Cardiff in the morning, but forget about it, any other time of the day, almost thirty minutes to get home. What are you guys going to do about this? Especially with this new volume that you guys are going to be adding in?
It's not on the ordinance.
Oh, quick check is what Chris is mean.
Okay. I appreciate your comments, ma'am.
Thank you. Please consider.
Okay.
I just wanted to raise one point, because sometimes it gets lost, because everyone's obviously passionate. This is really just the zoning. So if, I've heard a lot of comments about traffic, and we live in New Jersey, so it's part of, you know, we try to deal with it. But as the planning board, anything that goes has to be proposed at these properties needs to go to the planning board where they're better equipped to deal with traffic studies and traffic mitigation and things of that nature, so.
We're setting the maximum zoning right now, but they're going to go back before the boards to take plan approval and everything else.
Right, and I'm, from my experience, I know the planning board, you know, I heard some things, but I, I think they, they follow what the application and the implications of what the application is. It's my, just my view.
Okay.
One quick question, chief. There was a shooting there a couple of years ago, correct? Shootout, shooting at Wet? I forgot. Okay. That's it.
Lot of crime, lot of prostitution, lot of everything there.
Yep.
Anybody else on the phone line for this ordinance and this ordinance only? Hearing none, seeing none, want to send a motion to close move of final adoption. Second. Motion made and second to close move of final adoption. Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
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 I've been trying to get rid of.
Ordinance ten dash twenty-four, ordinance for introduction and ordinance to exceed the Minnesota budget appropriation limits and establish a cap bank. Need a motion to introduce.
So moved.
Second. Motion made and second to introduce. Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Depeña?
Yes.
Raziano?
Yes.
Notary?
Yes.
Robell?
Yes.
And Al Melha?
Yes. Next on our agenda is public commenting. I need a motion to open public commenting.
So moved.
Motion made and second to open public commenting. Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Depeña?
Yes.
Raziano?
Yes.
Notary?
Yes.
Robell?
Yes.
Al Melha?
Yes. We're now open for public commenting. I'm going to call upon you, give you five minutes. Come on up and state your name and address for the record. You have five minutes to speak on what we all hope is township.
Phyllis Frantantonin, Prospect Avenue. Mr. Cosarelli?
Yes.
I understand what you were trying to do, saying that there was a problem at Wet and a murder. What happened up there at the apartments where there was a shooting up there? That wasn't a strip club? People live there. It's happening all over Belleville. It's not only in places that have a strip club or whatever, but you can't use that for, to say, well, you got to put another building there, a cake store. Somebody go in there and rob the cake store, then what? Then what do you do? It's all over Belleville. And the planners, I heard him say, or whoever, this guy, I don't know.
Redevelopment attorney, Dean Donatelli.
All right, Dean Donatelli. He says, well, it's New Jersey. Well, it's New Jersey because the planners are getting whatever they want, and they're building all these buildings all over the state, and you can't get around. So maybe instead of saying this is New Jersey, maybe they should do something to stop the planners from building all these high rises, although I know you've always wanted it, because you made a remark one time that you'd like to see this like Hoboken. I wouldn't, because you get more flooding and you can't park to go to any of the restaurants. Thank you.
Anybody else in public commenting?
Gary, hitting 307 Fairway Avenue. First of all, today we were, yesterday we were at the graveyard for that illegal filling that was done. He called, he says he called the DEP, and we're going to have a meeting with the DEP. Is that correct?
You asked me to request a meeting, the DEP, and I drafted an email. Yes.
And did you get my email that I sent you back? Did you read it yet?
No, I didn't have a chance to.
Okay, I'm requesting, I'm requesting that at that meeting, that the DEP come with all the complaints that I've put in over the years, so we could see which ones were remedied and which ones are still open. You said, you said that there were open citations or whatever from there for.
I, I don't know of any open violations of citations.
So you're never, you're never mentioning this illegal dumping that was done there? And my question here is, why aren't we enforcing the laws that is put in place? Okay? Plain and simple, we had our town engineer there doing the illegal dumping, and everybody just pushes it under the rug, doesn't do anything about it. It's a mess. That river is a mess. Everybody down in that area, the Bridgebook Apartments and all Fairway Avenue and Celia Terrace get flooded worse since they did that filling into that land. They're, and second of all, they're selling people graves. Are they telling the people that this is in a flood plain, that they're putting these graves? Or you have to when you sell a house? Are they doing it there? Everybody just letting this here go with the cemetery. And I'm not going to stop. I've been fighting this for thirty, at least thirty-five years with this here illegal dumping. I proved that they didn't pull no permits. Our town engineer was there doing this illegal dumping with them, and I'd like to know why. Why aren't our laws being enforced? And like he said, it's selective enforcement. All right? And another thing, you have signs for thirty-minute parking on Franklin Avenue by the High Tension Wires or by the Belleville Nutley border. You put signs up there, thirty-five minute parking only where the hot dog truck was. All right? Were they, was there a resolution for them signs to be put up? Yes, no?
I, I don't have.
Or you catering to.
I have that information at my disposal. The second you ask.
Or you's catering to this hot dog vendor there. And I'm asking you this because there's another person in town that has a hot dog truck business that applied for a license to vend in Belleville, and they sold him the license, but he cannot stop and sit anyplace. Why is this person being able to stay there? They even made the sidewalks a spot for him to get right to, the cement right to the curb for the thing. So you're the catering to this here hot dog vendor there. And I think the, them signs that you put up are legal. They're only on that side where the hot dog truck is, and they should be removed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else in public comment? Mr. Frantantonin.
Yes, I'd like to address Mr. Cosarelli. You brought up that murder to justify your crazy proposals here. I and several dozen other residents in the area and all, other people around town, were at the boards. We objected to Wet going there, and we objected on the grounds that there was going to be trouble there, and we were correct. The other thing, we had lies at these meetings. You get professionals get up there and lies. That one of the things they said to justify Wet, it's always been a go-go joint. It wasn't always a go-go joint. We moved here in sixty-seven. I came to work here in National Shute, Court Street in sixty-three. My wife and I used to go there. It was called the Red Chingle Inn. It was a restaurant, and her cousin was a waitress there. Years later, another guy bought it, a big guy, I think you all know who it was, and he converted it to a go-go joint. Brought that up at the planning board meeting. Oh, no, you're wrong. I brought the telephone book from nineteen seventy-two, which showed it was the Red Chingle Inn restaurant. And yet, they're standing there, you know, these, that's what I said early before. You've got planning board members who are clueless, and you've got others just regard the truth because, well, let me not say why they vote sometimes, all right? Let me leave it at that. But, and again, it's, it's crazy. And just as an aside, I think one of your zoning board members ought to come off the zoning board because he now turned into a developer and he's also a township attorney. The ethics law says you could recue yourself because of a conflict of interest, or the appearance of a conflict of interest. So that member on the zoning board should be removed.
Thank you.
Now, we've got all these developments. It's about three, from my recollection, people live in a neighborhood. The Soho Project has been done, so we're here, for three, three and a half years. What's going on with that?
It's going on a lot longer than that. We're not sure what's going on with that. The project is done. There, there's a dispute between the township and the developer about whether or not he has to go back before the board, the, the planning board. There's also some discrepancy when it comes to some of the language in an agreement that he thinks he has with regard to a pilot from the prior administration.
Okay, now we got seventy-eight, one oh two, Washington Avenue. That I hear has been done. I hear there's another problem with that, that it can't run. What's the problem with seventy-eight and one oh two and the hundred and fifty-eight human cages? What's that problem with those cages?
A supply chain issue with PSC and G's meters or some kind of PSC and G part that's now in?
It's not done.
All right. So we got, so the Soho Project, I don't know, is it true? Is it your involvement, some of the things that you're insisting the developer does that he don't want to do?
Could file an open request to see the letter that the construction official and zoning officer issued to them, saying that they had to go back before the planning board before he would issue a CO. Now, you know I have absolutely no influence over the construction code officials, so therefore, it cannot be me, it must be his letter.
Well, you've interfered in other things, so, I don't know. But this is the example. We don't even have any of these things finished yet, and already we've got problems. This high-density stuff is crazy, and I go back, I think I said it before, I'm sixteen years old, my father comes home and says, guess what? Down by grandma's house, down in First Ward, by Rotunda Pool, they're going to build these wonderful luxury apartments, the Colonnade Apartments, right? And we've seen all, all those luxury apartments. I ask, I don't know if you ever, any of you go to the inspection station out of Freedom Heights and Avenue? If you do, drive a little further. And on the south side, on the west side, going south, you see all them beautiful brick buildings that were all lovely garden apartments. They've been boarding up and trees are growing out the windows for the last twenty years. So this is what happens in this high-density housing. All right? You know, a condo, I could see. People own it, they take care of it. These high-density rentals turn into slums.
Thank you.
Down the road.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You got to stop it.
Anybody else in public commenting? Ma'am?
No, you go first. You go.
Anthony Macosie, ninety-four Norton Street. Street sweeping starts Monday.
April first.
Yeah, starts this Monday, I guess, right? So I'm on my walk, daily walk, and I notice garbage cans all over the street, not on the sidewalk. Could the manager possibly get in touch with the garbage company and tell them to make their workers put the garbage cans on top of the sidewalk? Put them back, easier for the sweeper?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Fleishman.
Okay, Carmella Fleishman, thirty-three. Okay, um, the consent agenda. I have a couple of questions. Res, Dean, proposed bus stop, Rutgers westbound on Cortlandt. Where would the bus be going, traveling on? Because, are we talking about a New Jersey transit bus?
Something there?
You know, the town bus, what?
Know where they're traveling?
Do I know where they're what?
Where they're traveling? Bus.
It would have to be New Jersey.
So if it's going eastbound.
It says.
It's going, if it's going westbound, it's coming.
It'd be NJ DOT.
Over the bridge to this way.
Yeah.
It's not ours.
But what?
It's on, no, it's on, it's on the, exactly the route it took. I had the same question.
Okay.
New Jersey DOT.
Oh, good. And is it a transit bus or a town bus?
Chief, I don't know if this came from traffic. I don't know.
We don't have town bus stops.
I can assure you it's not a town bus.
It's not a town bus.
There are no town buses.
Okay, so it's a New Jersey transit bus then?
Probably.
Okay. Do you, have you ever been on a New Jersey transit bus? You really think New Jersey Transit Bus is going to fit on Cortlandt Street? It's not going to physically fit?
No, it's not going on Cortlandt Street. It's, it's Rutgers Street at.
Where exactly are we talking then?
Rutgers Street. At the intersection.
At Cortlandt. At Cortlandt, right at Cortlandt. Right on the corner.
This is Rutgers and this is Cortlandt would stop here.
On Rutgers.
Okay, but it would be physically on Rutgers.
Physically on Rutgers.
Bus still, okay.
Still Route Seven to Washington Avenue, which is.
Okay.
Oh, my nose.
Bus still ain't fitting. Okay.
Buses travel on Rutgers Street every day.
Where am I thinking, where's Rutgers? Where am I thinking?
Going over the bridge, going over the bridge. That's Rutgers.
Number one school.
Okay, I apologize. I was thinking.
We'll strike that from the record.
Okay, I apologize. I was thinking somewhere else. Okay. Resolution F.
F.
Purchasing of what is, where are we, what are we buying now?
We, we are not buying anything, we're selling.
Selling, okay.
That was previously, what happened was, that was a resolution previously passed, but the. That was a resolution previously passed for a property that's landlocked behind another property that the township owned. We're selling it to somebody who was interested in a budding property owner.
Okay.
The name on the check that we got for the deposit wasn't the actual owner of the property, so it was incorrect.
Okay.
That's being corrected. There's another, there's two of them on there for the same reason.
Same reason.
And those properties are undersized lots being sold to a budding property owners.
Okay. Resolution I. Now, I understand I'm being very petty about this, but any debts under ten dollars. Now, is that a state mandate that you's washed them away?
Yes.
It's in accordance with.
Township, so it, it's optional, but the cost of, of pursuing that and that kind of thing allows it done.
Logically, if you, you know, we do the same thing with billing in medicine.
Yeah, it's the same thing.
If you send, if you send two or three letters and you don't get response, okay, that's fine.
Resolution.
Now, God bless me, I regret asking this one. On O and P about the budget.[1582.16]
O and P.
Okay, so authorizing and approving and introduction, introduction of budget. I'm a little confused. How can you authorize, approve it, and introduce it on the same ordinance?
Approval and introduction is synonymous.
Okay.
Cause you're introducing it.
So they can just refer to it as the 2024 budget without having to read every line out of the.
It's a title. It's a title.
By title only.
Oh, okay.
The title. Title only.
Second one approves the introduction or, or approval of the.
Inevitably.
And now with the budgets, when are they officially due to the state?
They have to be introduced by law by, right around now. The end of this month.
The end of this month.
Belleville historically has been very late. The last four or five years or so, we've actually been right on target, if not missed one, one meeting. So we've introduced on time. But then it goes down the trend, and it could spend months in trends before.
Yeah, I mean.
They ask questions of him. We get more revenue come in. We change.
Change. We amend.
Okay.
Then it comes back to us and we vote on it. Last couple of years, it's been September.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So has there ever been a time in any of the history that the budget has been introduced in January? You know, sent to the state in January, or has it always been that three months?
Yeah, you don't even know. We don't get our revenues. We don't get state funding money until now. We just got it. So we can't plug that number in as a revenue.
Okay. And finally, with, you know.
But they start doing the budgeting process in October, as Anthony said. The process starts in October, but you're not allowed to introduce, you know, until you know those other numbers.
Correct. And you're not going anywhere. The, the state is on the June 30th. You're on, you're on the calendar here, right?
Oh, okay, so the state is. Okay, so the state, what?
Excuse me.
Calendar, is fiscal year. We run the calendar. Okay, that makes a lot.
Yeah, I know you have one more card. You need to wrap up quickly.
Okay. And also with, you know, like you said, you had a nice moment of silence for Councilman Burke. You explained to me why her picture was removed, and I appreciate the explanation of that. Very cute, very funny story, very quickly. She's the reason why we were in Silver Lake all those years. Because when we got engaged, we were looking for a place. She actually vouched for us to, our landlord, Rico Vialante. And that's how we ended up next to the firehouse, so. And also, I would like to suggest that somebody on the council makes a, you know, that we can rename the Friendly House after her. I think that would be a very nice gesture for a lady who spent a lot of years doing a lot of good for Belleville. And again, people have their differences, whatever, but like you said, you guys are a family.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else in public commenting? Anybody on the phones in public commenting?
Yes.
Yes. I'm sorry, may I just state your name and address for the record?
Lady Amparo, 57 Fairway Ave.
Okay.
Um, so speaking of developments, in regards to the Fairway Park renovation, I have a couple of, a few questions regarding that. You mentioned back in August 2022, the town received a grant for it. Who is the grant from and how much was the grant for?
I, I don't have that information at my disposal right now, but manager could probably obtain that for tomorrow.
Okay, so I, I just call back the manager tomorrow?
Yeah, I'm not sure if you could hear him, but he said absolutely.
Yeah, no, I can't hear him. Given that it's almost two years since we received the grant, is the full amount or is any of it still available to be used by the town? Does it ever expire?
I, I, yeah, I'm not sure what grant it was. If it wasn't spent, yes. We do, we are beginning to start that project literally right now, I think.
Oh, so there are renovations? That would have been my next question. When are the renovations supposed to start? So it's starting right now?
We are scheduled to go out to bid within the next 30, 40 days.
The, the plans are already designed and we're going out to bid within the next 30 days.
Perfect. Um, last thing, um, just, so you know, the Supreme Court has recently made a ruling on March 15th, 2024, to be exact. They threw out the lower court decision affirming the blanket right of public officials to ban people from their social media, essentially creating a narrow finding that only under certain very narrow circumstances could a public official ban a person and threw the cases back to the lower court to reconsider their ruling in light of the parameters that the Supreme Court set. Having said this, Mayor Melham, when are you going to unblock the people you have censored?
I'll review that, I guess.
You should. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else on the, anybody else on the phone line for public commenting? Hearing none, seeing none. Entertaining motion to close public commenting.
Motion closed.
Second. Motion made and second to close public commenting. Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
De Penya? Yes.
Rosiano?
Yes.
Notary?
Yes.
Robell?
Yes.
And Mayor Melham?
Yes. Consent agenda.
I think we can move the whole thing.
Mayor, can we pull D, E, O, and P?
D, E.
Have some questions?
D, E, O, and P. O, and P. So we can move the rest of it?
Yes.
Okay.
So entertaining motion to move the consent agenda with the exception of D, E, O, and P. I need a motion to move everything else.
So moved.
Second. Motion made and second. Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
De Penya?
Yes.
Rosiano?
Yes.
Notary?
Yes.
Robell?
Yes.
And Mayor Melham?
Yes.
So, yeah, so D. I would like to reiterate what Ms. Fleishman said. So when I looked at the agenda, I'm trying to understand, A, who put it in, because I had questions, so I figured Tom Huritz would know, but Tom Huritz didn't even have a clue that this went in. Number one. Number two, we're talking about coming up Rutgers, which is, we're doing a good job. I mean, it looks nice, uh, quick check. Well, it's beautiful, but with buses, they're gonna stop along Cortlandt Street, near the side. Then they're gonna begin the curb entry up Cortlandt, 105 feet, then it go along, then it goes, it goes all the way around, along Belleville Avenue, blah, 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 blah. Was, did they come down here?
Where'd this come from?
Did, did we do a traffic study on this? But why randomly do we just put it on?
That's a good, that's a good one.
That, I'm just asking. Can we table it?
I, I assume it could, it's police department, it's traffic.
From the county, man? Carlos, oh, your boy Carlos.
Yeah, but, but if that's the case.
Like, we had this issue a couple of months ago with a different governing body, let's put it that way, where they just send stuff to our clerk and it ends up on our agenda. Like, we've been doing this for decades now. We, we don't have a better, a better.
What about D-Wet? It says beginning at Wesley curb line.
Sat D-Wet.
Thank you. I, I just, I just wanna understand, yeah. Okay. I mean, just to understand it as.
So is that D and E? Those comments are for both?
No, that was just D. And then E, I just had a, again.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. So do I make that motion to table it now?
Let's, no, we'll do more. Let's do all your comments.
Okay. And then E is just a question. I, I read through it and because it's, let me see here. It says authorizing hiring. Okay, so that means, I'm gonna assume with the authorization of hiring.
No.
Okay, good.
Mike, Mike, Smikes.
That is an order, we had passed a resolution. That's consistent with state law. So state, the state passed a law that allowed certain alternate routes because of the inability to get officers. It was changed back in, we, when we passed it, I think in 2019, Mark, 2000?
21. 21.
21. Oh, yeah, it says it here, cause I did it. So it's 21, and then subsequent to us passing that resolution, the law changed. And in order to be consistent, in order for us to be consistent with the law, this resolution had to be passed.
Okay, and I was only asking because it said.
It's not for any particular hires, if that's what you mean. It has nothing to do with that. It allows, it gives mark.
It's just the language.
And I was only asking that team because that went to my head and said, hey, was that part of the, um, the budget? So that, you could understand, I'm looking at the title, so that's why I asked the question.
It, it doesn't pertain to, right. It doesn't pertain to anybody in particular, but it gives. It, it may assist the police department in the future in hiring and being able to fill the.
I knew, I knew the other avenues. I just, because it said on the title, just wanted to hear it, that's all.
Right.
So I'm good. Okay, so I'm good with that one. We could. I'm, I'm, no, on both sides. Okay. And then, you know, you know my feelings about O and P, and that's why I thought that was gonna.
Oh, I see. Yeah, no, one has nothing to do with the other.
It was coming back, okay.
Yeah, yeah. So you're okay, O and P?
I'm, I'm not okay with it because I still.
No, I'm asking, because then we'll vote on them all separately.
All separately.
Okay, so let's do.
Want to do a roll call, basically.
Yeah, on, on everything. So let's do a.
But we can move D and E simultaneously, can't we?
No.
No?
No.
So I want, I want a table D.
So I need a motion, someone make a motion to table D.
I'd like to make a motion to table D.
We have a motion made and second to table D. Clerk call the roll. We haven't tabled something.
Just wanna understand.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Table it. Yes, yes is the table.
Um, De Penya, yes?
Yeah.
Yes.
Notary?
Yes.
Robell?
Yes.
And Mayor Melham?
Yes. E, just a roll call vote?
Yeah.
Yeah.
E, I need a motion for a vote?
So moved.
Second. Motion made and second for a roll call.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
De Penya?
Yes.
Rosiano?
Yes.
Notary?
Yes.
Robell?
Yes.
And Mayor Melham?
Yes. O and P together?
O and P together.
Need a motion for O and P together. So moved. Motion made and second for O and P together.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
De Penya?
Yes.
Rosiano?
I'm gonna take no part.
Vote?
Yes.
I voted yes.
Going.
Notary?
Yes.
Robell?
Yes.
And Mayor Melham?
Yes. New business. New business. Seeing none, hearing none. Entertaining motion to adjourn.
I, I just wanted, I just wanna make one, one quick comment. I, I've been waiting for 16 years to get rid of, get rid of Wet. I voted against it with the rest of the council, but I lost. So to me, I'd prefer to see anything but Wet, just so you know.
Plus public parking.
Plus public parking.
A whole lot of other things. Uh, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.